Let's call the meeting door, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please Tom.
Mayor King.
President.
Governor of Austin.
President.
Senator Wallace.
President.
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 Looking for a motion to option the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are on to number two, Third Ward Council applicant presentations. First up is Mr. Ronald Kelly. Ronald, you, I think you were given some expectations where you have five minutes to present why you'd be the best candidate for the Third Ward and for the remaining of the term. So the floor is yours. Thank you for applying, sir.
Yep, and I am Ronald Kelly. My address is fourteen oh three Fourth Avenue Southeast. We live over near Ellis School and across the street from Bethlehem Church. I was born and raised here in Austin and over the years have been back and forth because my parents continued to live here. We moved back permanently again about fifteen years ago to help care for our elderly parents. And the process of doing that, we've been involved within the community. I've done work, well, we've both done work in the public school system, whether it was through cafeteria helping or doing some subbing. We've also been active in local political activities. We wanted to keep an update in terms of how things are going in Austin. And a lot had changed in the time that we'd been away and then moved back again. And but we enjoyed getting to know many of the new people that are in Austin. And we have, I guess, notably been involved in a couple of our candidates' elections up in the cities. And so we've kept in close ties with them to find out what's going on up there. And what they're doing, that could affect Austin because my desire is to work along with everybody else on the council and with the mayor to see Austin's potential continue to expand, hopefully for new business growth and to begin to see a wider diversity in terms of the types of businesses and work that people can do and be a part of in the community. Of course, we do volunteer. We do some work. Well, I actually have a booth out at the fair every year and get a chance to meet a lot of people out there, talk with them. As you may be aware, I was actually, I actually ran for the position that Joyce gave up. And so I've had a chance to get around to all the people in the Third Ward. And if you walk it yourself, it's quite a distance. But it gave us an opportunity to get to know some of the other people now living in the Third Ward and to find out some of their concerns because I want their concerns to be my concerns if I'm on the council. I am a retired person living on a fixed income, but I think that there's a lot of people in Austin now that share that same position. And so I've been a little bit concerned, obviously, about how hard it is to be able to make ends meet these days, both on a national level and on a state level. And but anyway, I want to do my best to represent them as people who, a lot of us have had to get second jobs just to be able to try to make ends meet. And I'm not sure just exactly what all the council is working on. I know that you're involved in a number of different things like housing and things like that that are trying to be brought online so that people can feel like they can move into Austin and live here rather than to have to live somewhere outside of town and then drive in in order to be able to work here. And so I would hope that I would be able to help lend a voice and communicate information back and forth to people living in the Third Ward about what the council is up to and how we are seeking and working to help improve their lives, to keep them safe, prosperous, to live in a peaceful community, a place where people feel free to be able to go out and walk about. I've had a chance to visit with people in law enforcement here. I've had a chance to visit with small business community here, to find out what's been happening with that. I've just tried to make myself aware of where things are at and then to say, how could I help with these different things that people have concerns about and would like to see done and would like to do in their own lives so that they have every opportunity to be able to look forward to completing their own dreams, whether that might be creating a business or working with one of the established companies here in town. Obviously, we have a couple of major contributors to the community in terms of jobs and livelihood. And I'm sure that their concerns are the council's concerns. And I certainly want to help work with those corporate interests to see that a lot of people are receiving good wages, good benefits, the opportunity to live once again in a secure, nice community of people that care about each other, that work together to overcome problems together and where meaningful living is a part of that rather than the perpetuation of, you know, the drug and liquor lifestyle. I don't know just how much of that is going on and what our law enforcement is doing. I just know I feel safe in Austin and I'm glad that that is the case. So anyway, that would be my, I guess, my five-minute timer. So if any of you have any questions, I'd be free to, willing to answer.
Yeah, we're just going to keep it fair, Ronald, and just have the presentation without any questions. So I appreciate your interest and your application and you did a nice job. So if you wanted to wait around in the green room over there and come back for the deliberation, or you're free to go home, we can let you know either way.
Okay. I appreciate your time, folks. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Next up, Leah Erickson. Hi Leah, welcome.
Hi.
Thanks for your application and your interest in becoming the, finishing out the term of the Third Ward. And what you were doing is just a five-minute presentation on why you think you'd be the best candidate of the choice.
Okay.
It's all you.
So. Want me to start here then?
Nah, you don't need to give her name and address.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty. So obviously, I'm very nervous because I've never given a speech like this before. This was also the first time that I have ever written a resume and a letter of interest. So all in all, it's been a great learning experience and actually kind of exciting. I'd just like to say thanks for the opportunity to be here with everybody today. And my name is Leah Erickson. I am a business owner and a lifelong resident of Austin. My dad, Alan Jacobson, also known as Big Jake, he served in the Moore County Sheriff's Department and retired from the Austin Fire Department. He also owned several businesses in Austin. It would be an honor to follow in my father's footsteps in public service. My experience in my profession as a hairstylist has given me a deep understanding of the day-to-day challenges our residents face. Obviously, in my line of work, all we do is talk. You know, everybody wants to know what you did this weekend, you know, what's going on. And then on the flip side, oh my gosh, did you hear about this? Did you read the news? Did you see this? You know, so we get to hear a lot and talk and also hear a lot of opinions. So I am seeking a position on the CD Council because I believe local government works best when it is represented by a diverse group with unique experiences and relationships with the residents. Listening to my clients is one of my greatest strengths, a skill I intend to bring to public service. My priorities include supporting small businesses, smart economic growth, and making city services more accessible and efficient for everyone. I am committed to listening, building consensus, and taking action that reflects the needs and hopes of the people who live and work here in the city of Austin, as well as making this community our residents are proud to call home. I appreciate your consideration and the chance to serve. I know I would be a great asset to this council and to our community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Leah. I didn't realize that you were Alan Jacobson's daughter. My dad worked with your dad in the fire department. I know Tommy probably had plenty of occasion to.
I think so. I didn't realize. Yes, we did. I did. It was an exciting conversation.
Very good. Small world. Well, thank you, Leah. I appreciate your application and presentation. You can either wait in the green room over there or you can, you're free to leave and we'll let you know the results. When everybody's done, we'll call you back in if you're still here.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you.
Thanks, Leah. Next up, Obala. The firemen all called him Fat Alan. Knowing him all my life, he was Fat Alan.
His parents were friends of my parents.
Yeah, good dude. He was friends with my parents. Obala, welcome and thanks for your interest on finishing out the Third Ward.
Thank you.
You got kind of a notice that says it's going to be a five-minute presentation.
Yep.
And after that, you can stick around if you wanted to wait in the green room and then we'll call you in for the deliberation or you're free to leave and we'll call you with the results of who this council selects tonight. So five minutes, Obala. You, I have the floor.
Thank you. Your Honor, Mayor King, council members, thank you again for giving me this opportunity to be here today. I would like to begin by sharing why I'm here. My strongest motivation of being, joining you here on the council is the leadership and the value you bring, especially the commitment making the council and making Austin a welcoming and inclusive. At a time when our city is embracing a new chapter, one marked by transparency, accountability, diversity, and renewed focus on citizen engagement and employee engagement, I am inspired by the opportunity to be part of that transformation. Austin plays a crucial role in helping me achieve my American version dream. Each of you contributed in one way to that journey. I am deeply committed to give back by helping others achieve their American dreams. As you can see through this, your leadership and guiding and making everyone feel welcome has fueled in so many candidates to this position. The honorary city council that all of you create, that I am a recipient of it, is what makes everyone interested of giving back to Austin community. I'm deeply committed to giving back in helping others. With a strong background in management, collaboration, and community engagement, I'm eager to contribute to Austin's future, particularly in helping shave the comprehensive plan that will guide our city in long-term vision. Transparency and accountability in government are value I hold dearly. I believe that clear, open communication between city department and resident is essential to ensuring our policies reflect the real need of our community. While the council has already accomplished a great deal, there is still more work to be done to ensure that every part of Austin continues to thrive, especially Third Ward. If I appointed, I would prioritize collaboration with department head on several key issues, advancing the comprehensive plan to shape sustainable and inclusive future for Austin, partnering with park and rec creation on the master plan to modernize the public space and meet our community involving needs, strengthening the employment engagement to attract and retrain top talent across the city department, enhancing our public safety through close collaboration with our police department. Council members, I've been in that position before and that's why I'm so excited and been motivated to be back and serve again. While on the council a few years ago, on the First Ward, I gained so much experience and deeper knowledge about how the city worked. Even though I have to make a difficult decision to step down when my family built our American dream in Third Ward, since then, I've been so involved within the community because service doesn't mean you only have to sit on the city council. I've been involved serving as commissioner on the HRA. I've been involved as a commissioner on Austin Area Foundation. I've been involved in helping mentoring the young leaders of Austin. As I travel through across the state, sharing the work all of you have done, the leadership all of you guide me, I am inspired and so many city have copied the work we have done here and now they're doing it the same thing they are doing that Austin, making a better place for everyone. Council members, if I'm appointed, there's no need for another training. I will be jumping right away into work. As we approach next month, the budget is coming and that is the most crucial work for the city council, managing the budget of the city. Those are the experience I have learned in my previous experience. I will be honored to be back and serve the beautiful people of Third Ward. For the last three years, I've been walking, biking, learning, connecting with the people in my area to know and the issues that they desire or the changes they would like to see. Above all, I am being honored to express and also share the work we have done. With that, I will, I will stop here if there is any question. Overall, this is another opportunity in serving and giving back to the community and making Austin a better place. With all your help, we will continue to moving Austin forward. Thank you again for your time and giving me the opportunity to speak before you today.
Very good. Thank you, Obala. I appreciate your interest, as I said before. And you can stick around in the green room over there across the hall and then we'll call you when the council deliberates, see who the selection will be. Or you're free to leave and we'll contact you by phone on the results.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Obala.
Thank you.
Next up, Bradley Johnson, then Cindy Stahl, then Michael Huffman. Then Tom Steen to follow it up. You'll be the seventh person, Tom.
Can we make motions to appoint people or is that just?
Bradley, welcome. Appreciate your interest in the finishing out the Third Ward term for Councilmember Pashusta and welcome. And just as you were notified, five-minute presentation. There will be no other questions after your presentation and then you're free to stick around or leave and we'll let you know the results. If you stick around, you can watch the council deliberate and who they choose tonight.
Okay.
The floor is all yours. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to apply for the Austin City Council Third Ward position. I've been interested in local politics for most of my adult life and finally decided to try and join the ranks last year with what I thought was a respectable showing in the election. Currently the treasurer and member of Gray Suesler Church, Austin, which is in the Third Ward. Been married for forty-eight years. I have four children, fourteen grandchildren, two of which are deceased. Currently serve as the president of St. Mark's Living Austin and the vice president of the Austin Enhancement Group, which is involved in several community activities. Had the pleasure of being the announcer and scorekeeper for Austin High School Hockey for over thirty years. Excuse me. Been an active volunteer for Ruby's Pantry since its inception and I try to be active in the community. My previous business dealings and current employment offer me the opportunity to talk with several people each day. I have worked with every department within the city of Austin and since the nineteen eighties and I have developed a good relationship with them. If I am successfully appointed, I will work diligently for the citizens of the city of Austin. While I can bring forward issues affecting the Third Ward, all decisions will affect the entire city. I do not have a personal agenda. I will listen to concerns and ideas from the constituents, city staff, and other government entities. I have in the past facilitated the joint venture between the Austin Public School System and Austin Utilities to place fiber to all of the schools and power substations. This resulted in a substantial savings for both groups involved. I'd like to consider myself a planter of seeds. I will offer several ideas, some of which will grow and bear fruit, others will wither away. If the idea is not presented, neither is an option. With my business background and construction experience, I will be able to ask insightful questions at city council meetings which will allow for informed decisions. I've been active in utility industry management since the late nineteen seventies. I coordinated the installation of irrigation at the Northwest Soccer Field and the East Practice Fields at Wescott Complex using all volunteer labor. I was the facilitator for the installation of lighting at the Riverland Baseball Complex using all volunteer labor. My business philosophy has been to investigate problems and arrive at an intelligent solution. Sometimes the solution is not immediate. My management approach has been to listen to all sides and decide, of course, an action that brings about the fairest conclusion. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of being the official scorekeeper for the District High School softball tournament. Through my years with Austin High School, I have offered to help where needed. I was asked yesterday because nobody would volunteer to work as the scorekeeper for the high school tournaments. One of my passions will be to convince the public to get involved. The reality is that without volunteers, many activities may not occur. Currently, I have the desire to help the city of Austin using my knowledge and common sense approach. I did manage one thousand five hundred and twenty-one votes out of the two thousand nine hundred and forty-five votes cast for the position in the Third Ward in the twenty twenty-four election.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. Appreciate your willingness to step up and apply.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Next up, Cindy Stahl. Hi Cindy.
Hi.
Welcome and thank you for your application. As you were notified, there's a five-minute presentation on why you believe you'd be the best candidate. And after that, there'll be no questions and when you're finished, you can go back to the green room and wait and we'll call you back in for the deliberation or you're free to leave and then we'll call you, notify you the results.
Okay.
So the floor is all yours. Welcome.
Well, if not everybody knows me, I am Cindy Stahl. I am a native of Austin. I'd just like to say thank you and good afternoon. I don't know if everybody had a chance to peruse my letter of interest or my resume. As you can see, if you've seen my resume, I do a lot of volunteer work, so I am committed to making Austin better. I want to, not only we have the housing going up, you know, Main and Mel Two is going up, First and Third is already currently going, the Nature Ridge with thirty units going up. I want to start working on building businesses in here in Town of Austin to bring revenue in, try to get the tax levy down. And what I believe in, what I want to push for a little bit sooner than later, if, you know, that I would think would help with attract businesses and other families to stay besides the jobs is the Austin Whitewater Park. I think that would be huge. That will attract not only tourists, that will bring revenue in. It'll attract businesses, which will also lead into jobs for everybody in this community. I've also looked at too, since my last meeting that I had as honorary city council member, I was looking at this right here. So I didn't know if that would make any difference for the Austin Whitewater Park, but looking at this too, the flooding, they didn't mention the train bridge on Oakland. But I do think like this extended pond area would be great, you know, and the low flow if they put that in under I ninety to go under. And the only part I'm worried about, I think that's the greatest part, feasible, I think it is, but that low area that goes feeds into by Dresner where that flooding is and under there. So I mean, I just want to rack brains with you guys on that to make it better and also work on other stuff. You know, and I see a lot of opportunities with Port Authority, what they're doing in the twenty-five acres north of I ninety that the ag part in the industrial area. And like what they said on expanding that pond in the blue area for the soil there and helping where businesses can grow in there as well. So what I want to focus on is getting the tax levy lowered because I want to keep families in their home and others to come here. You know, that's a big thing for me is like the tax levy. I see it go up. I want people available to stay in their homes, afford their homes and not have to work jobs to make ends meet, to stay in their home. But I also think like this Austin Whitewater Park, besides the businesses, I think it's an attraction too, which will fill those housing and we can look at more housing at the Nature Ridge. That's a great opportunity and everything else. I just want to keep on working on that and build Austin so it's a great community for everybody to want generations after generations to stay here, build their families. My family's here, my sister, except for one, has stayed and they got grandchildren. So I want to bring this community to the highest level that it can be, like it used to be. I remember growing up, crazy days where we blocked the streets. I'd like to see that again. Of course, we're not going to have Lowellworth or Red Owl or anything like that, but I would like to see that again. And then I seen, it was mentioned at Port Authority for a downtown hotel. I thought that was a great idea. You know, those that come to see the Spam Museum or anything in that area, you know, to stay within walking range can see, you know, Austin Art Center. If they come in town, they're right there too for the art festival and I think that's huge. So I'd like to see more growth with businesses that will attract people to come in and more businesses. Like I think, like I reiterate, the Austin Whitewater Park, I just really believe in that. That will help build revenue for the city and then the community with jobs and everything else. So that's a little bit of my vision and not just vision, goals. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it. Again, thanks for your application and your presentation. And we have just one more candidate and then we can call people back in if they want to be actively listening for the deliberation and see who the council chooses.
Okay. And I just want to say, I'm Cindy Stahl, your next Third Ward City Council member.
You can make a sign.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you. Last up, Mike Huffman. Michael Huffman, welcome and thank you for your application.
Yeah, thank you.
So you have five minutes. After that, there'll be no questions and we'll just, you're the final candidate for doing the five-minute presentation.
Perfect.
And then you can stick around and we'll deliberate. Council will make a decision and you can be, you can be here for that if you choose.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Good afternoon.
The floor is all yours.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the city of Austin, the council, and the staff members for this opportunity. Thank you for considering me. Sometimes I just told myself, I'm going to try it. I'm going to give it a shot. My name is Michael Huffman. My wife and I are proud to call Austin our home. I've lived in this Third Ward for over thirty years. We've raised our three children here. Professionally, I've spent the last thirty-five years working in a small business, which I call Pro Auto Clean. You might have heard of it. And I'm also the vice president of the Riverads Car Club here in Austin, a car club dedicated to its proceeds going to the veterans of the military. This is our tenth year. It's a 501(c), which we run a big car show at the end of the year and some of you might have seen it. I like the opportunity to serve the city council and focus on fiscal responsibility, the growth and development of our business community, of course, and to build strong community partnerships. and to build strong community partnerships. By focusing on these, I believe we could continue to bright future in Austin, Minnesota. Some of my qualifications, I think I have great character, a sound judgment integrity, and represent the people's public interest and not shy away from my own personal interest. I'm a relationship builder. I will put the time and effort to get to know each another one. Council managers, cities, the staff, and if you're real lucky, you'll get on my list to be at my neighborhood block party, which I have every year. And this will be our third year, which I am current president, organizer, chief cook, and bottle washer for. I'm a team player, strong communicator. I'll be able to remain curious about open-minded positions of others and to be in good working constructively, collaboratively with others to produce results. I'm still focused in my glasses here. We can be proud of. Results we can be proud of. I'm a good team player. I'm accessible. I'm always around. Just a phone call away. I don't work out of town. I'm usually always home. I'm going to do my homework. I'll be prepared, research, do what's needed to be done, the city council meetings in other settings. I understand city finances. I will be, they have the ability to make good, quick financial decisions, to do what's necessary. Their skills, policymakers can evaluate budgets and financial statements. I believe I'm pretty good with time management, being a business owner, father, grandfather, goes down the line. And I thank you for your time.
Well done. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your interest in your application. And if you want to just pull up a chair here, if you want to stick around, you don't have to, but if you want to stick around, our ballots will come in here. Welcome back, candidates. Welcome back. Before council deliberates, and you'll hear that discussion, I just want to, again, thank you for your application, your interest. Whether or not you get selected, I really strongly hope, and I think I see it in you, that you will continue to represent Austin in whatever way and capacity you have, and continue to be a promoter of Austin. So I can certainly understand, from the council's standpoint, it's a difficult decision. And to have six folks step up and put their names in was more than I expected. So I appreciate everybody's interest and your willingness to serve. So I will turn it over to council to bandy about who they might think would be the best candidate for finishing out the third ward.
Well, I'll start us off. Hopefully, this will be an easy transition. I first want to thank everyone for applying and encourage you all to stay involved in the community. There's, as Obala mentioned, there's more than one way to serve the community. So even if it's not as a city council person, it might be on one of the commissions or boards or any other number of ways to be involved. Personally, I wrote down some criteria of what I think I am looking for in a city council member, and so I'm just going to share that to try to be really transparent. And a couple of things that are not a criteria that I think are necessary for service in the city council. So I don't think you need any particular education or expertise. Having a connection to the community is really the main education you need. I don't evaluate my personal ties or whether or not I like you, although, of course, I like all of you. I'm not looking for someone who would vote the same way I would vote, who would rubber stamp all my ideas. That's not a criteria that I'm personally looking for. And I don't necessarily need you to be a lifelong resident of Austin or have lived here a long time. I think there's sometimes some value to having experiences in other communities, too. So those are not my criteria. What I am looking for is if there is any evidence that residents of Ward 3 have a preference for you as a candidate, that's something that I am counting. If you'll work for the good of the entire community, and that might be my number-one criteria. I'm looking for someone that wants to serve the whole community. I think Austin is small enough that, I mean, really, when we vote, I'm not thinking just of my ward. I'm thinking of the whole community. I'm looking for folks that have some experience managing a larger organization. The city is a big organization. It's 150 employees. It's a multimillion-dollar annual budget. And I find that the decisions that we're making for the city really need to be at that higher scale. And it's not necessarily the same as managing a small business with five employees. Some of the lessons translate, but some of them don't at that higher scale. Experienced lobbying at the state legislature is a plus. That is something that we in the city council do in support of our city administrator. I'm looking for someone who can maintain professional relationships, even though we don't always agree. I like to call it the ability to disagree agreeably. I think that's really important. We happen to have a council that I think is, while certainly not all of one mind, we're civil and cordial with each other. We're not combative. There are not personality conflicts that are active distractions for this council. So I'm mindful that we don't want to disturb that ecosystem. And then finally, connected to the community. So among those criteria, I see strong reflections from all of the candidates. It's really going to be a difficult choice. And again, thank you, everybody, for putting your hat in the ring. And I encourage you to, since we have at least five people that we can't appoint, I hope to continue to see you involved in the community.
Thank you, Laura. Any other council members want to weigh in on criteria or any thoughts they might have?
Yeah, I think, you know, to kind of build on what Laura was saying, I mean, first of all, thank you for the applications. I think this is incredible. And, you know, as we went through the resumes, as each of you presented, you know, the way I think about it is, okay, kind of with three things. Number one, you know, are they committed to the benefit of the city of Austin and willing to and proven to have worked there? I mean, I think that's all in spades. I mean, I leave this just so excited about the work that everybody is doing to improve our community, whether in an official capacity or unofficial capacity. So thank you for applying, and thank you for all the incredible things that you do to help our community. So that's kind of the first one. The second is, obviously, look for, okay, kind of proactive solutions. You know, anybody can identify issues, like what are kind of the proactive solutions? Are there specific areas that they want to focus on, that, you know, understanding kind of where we're at in terms of big things that are coming down the pike? And then finally, you know, kind of, if all that, and I think that we've got really good folks that are doing that as well. So then it kind of comes down to, okay, based on where we're at in budget cycles, where we're at in the year, where we're at in the process, kind of that experience to hit the ground running. You know, just speaking from my own personal experience, I think there's a huge learning curve when you join the council. It's not, obviously, insurmountable, but I think about, you know, the council member that I am today versus the council member that I was, you know, my first couple of years on council, and you kind of wish you could go back at times and go like, what were you thinking on that? So I think experience and kind of having walked through some of that stuff is really, really important. And so, no, I think we've got some great candidates as we go through, and, you know, thank you for all applying.
Thanks, Jason. Others?
Yeah, I really tried to, you know, as I sat here, tried to think about what criteria, and it's kind of unique, right, for us to choose our peer. That's generally not how this process goes. We let the citizens select who represents them, and then we all get to work together, whether we want to or not. And actually, this group does a great job of that. I'm really impressed with the presentations. I really am impressed that six people stepped forward. So, and I really want to, and hopefully you'll hear it even more, really echo, you all are doing great things in the community through your volunteerism. Please keep that going, because that is honestly more important than some of the stuff we do. I promise you, people care more about the Riverets Car Club Show or the Foodie Throwdown than they care about what we're doing at a wastewater treatment plant with a pipe or something sometimes. So please keep that going, because that's really what makes Austin, Austin. When I started to think about what criteria I was looking for, I agree with most of what Laura and Jason said. For me, I was looking, again, for that volunteerism and just the demonstration of things that they've done in the past. I also did kind of take note of those who have been attending some of the city council meetings, you know, to kind of keep plugged in, and I know they're available online, so I'm sure some of you may have been watching as well. I also put some value on those who have raised their hand and run for office before, because I know how challenging that can be, and so they've shown the commitment and their interest in it. So those are just some of the criteria that I was looking for.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to all six of you for putting your name in for the third ward and joining me there, and you've all did a good job. But thank you for applying.
Yeah, I guess I would have to say that prior to being elected to this office and serving the number of terms that I have, I also applied twice to open positions. And I guess so I come at this from that perspective, the perspective of you applicants, as well as those of us that were elected to this board. And I have to say, not to slight you, but I think it's a lot harder to run for office and convince a majority of the citizens of your ward or of the city to elect you than it is to come before us and convince the majority of us to appoint you. But I do applaud you all for applying and being involved. And those that have run before, I congratulate you for stepping out, putting yourself out there. I guess my criteria, in addition to some of the things that the other members have mentioned, is that I guess I look to somebody that's an independent thinker that can make a decision based on the discussion that the council has and is not weighed by others' opinions necessarily or can act on their own without being told how to run, and also can collaborate and work together with not only the council, but all the employees of the city, the department heads in particular. So I guess that's what I'm kind of looking for. Appreciate you guys all applying. I hope that you stay involved, as everyone else said. And if you are committed to serving on council, please take the chance and run for office in a year and a half, two years, when elections open again.
I'd just like to say I commend all of you. I'm really proud of how you all got up here, you stepping up to the game. It is one of those things for me, I'm looking for someone who's willing to build relationships throughout the community, with the council, with department heads, and everyone within the city and the state. So that's one of my big things. Experience is strong for me. People who show up who are committed volunteering, whether it's the little things that you think no one really sees you doing or the big things. And then, really, I'm looking for a problem solver, someone who can dive in, have some experiences, and be able to work within the problem solving. Because on council, there's not just, we all vote the same way. We're going to have problems and issues we got to deal with, whether it's within the community or within departments, budgeting. So I'm looking for someone who is really involved in all of those aspects. And, I mean, I'm proud of the third ward for stepping up. We did this back when I was on council the first time. We had a vacancy in first ward, and we did not get six people. So seeing this many that care about Austin, it really says something about our community, and it just continues to be the reason why even I am on council, is because of everyone that's in this room. You guys are showing why Austin is so great. So very proud. Thank you so much for coming today.
Very good. Thank you all, council. I certainly hope you presenters appreciate the position the council's in. Like Councilmember Postman mentioned, picking your peer is not easy. But this might be the first opportunity that I appreciate not having a vote. It's all up to council, as long as we get a majority. So you're all equally, you have your assets, no doubt. Everybody has their strengths. But now it's time to kind of weigh in with some name that might rise to the top that you guys would feel would be the best suited to finish out that term. So I'm open to open that discussion.
Yeah, so I guess I'll start off kind of talking through it. So again, kind of going through the criteria, committed to the benefit of all of Austin, check. Everybody's got that. You know, I think proactive solutions, not just identifying issues. I thought, you know, everybody kind of did a really nice job there. So to me, it really comes down to kind of that experience piece of it. And as I look at the candidates that have applied for it, you know, to me, the one that stands out probably the most is Mr. Obala. And, you know, as I think about it, I think, you know, we've got two people that have run for office. Good, you know, I think that gives a level of experience. I do think the time, having served on office, having been a member of the council, kind of getting some of that learning curve taken away, definitely helps, especially as we go into the budget system, especially as we go into, you know, trying to solve some of the challenges that we're doing. So to me, I mean, it's incredibly tight trying to look at the different candidates, but, you know, if the first two criteria are really, you know, connected, I do think that experience of having been elected, having won, having served, and, you know, certainly the concept of, it's not like he had a lost election as much as, hey, you live in one part of the town, and, you know, you build your family dream home in another part of the town. And, I don't know, doing what makes your wife happy is probably not a bad strategy in terms of judgment. So that's at least kind of my initial preference, but open to kind of what other people are thinking.
I guess for me, I agree with you on a lot of that. I feel like running for office is a huge thing. It's a time commitment. When you get out there and you're putting your name out and you're doing everything you can do to get your ward to vote for you. So, I mean, for me, looking at candidates, I have a top three. I can narrow it down to the top two. I'm looking at two that have been showing up consistently to meetings, which is nice to see a face, someone who cares in the presence. So I'm looking at Bradley and Obala for my choices as of right now, but I do have another one.
Thank you, Becky.
Those were also my top two.
Yeah, those are my top two as well, again, kind of for the reasons I outlined. And I know there are three folks who run for office, so I very much appreciate that. And those two have won or, you know, made a very solid showing. And I honestly really appreciate that they have been coming to meetings and kind of paying attention to the issues that we're dealing with. It's a really tough choice between the two, but I think right now, ultimately, I favor Obala just based on the fact that he has a couple of years on council, and to me, that's kind of a tiebreaker.
Thank you, Mike. Paul, Jeff, where are you at?
You've all made very good points, and you're all very good candidates. I think I look at, as you've all mentioned, experience being a big factor. Knowing kind of how the city council works, the decisions we make, the different things we discuss, whether it's budget or whatever. I think, I think Obala would probably be one that I would pick just because of his past experience on the council.
Thank you, Paul. Jeff?
I guess my applicant of choice would be Mr. Johnson, Bradley Johnson. Even though Obala has served before, I think Brad, having run for mayor last year and the campaign he ran and being involved and knowing the city employees and the city operation and his involvement in the community, puts him first in my opinion. So now, do we need a motion to select somebody and we vote on that person? Where do we go from here?
Sure, like a motion and a second, and further discussion if you wish. Then we'll take it from there.
So I would make a motion to select Obala Obala as the third ward council applicant.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for Obala Obala. Any further discussion?
No, just to say, I think, I mean, this is incredibly, incredibly tough choice. And, you know, I would love to see all of you on the ballot in, you know, what, 18 months? Just because I think it's great to get involved, and, you know, whether it's on council or not on council, I mean, there's so many great ways to be involved, and so thank you again for showing up, and this is a tough choice.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tom, I want to do a roll.
So a motion by councilmember Baskin, second by councilmember Halli, appoint Obala Obala to the third ward council seat. So an eye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Nay.
Motion passes 5-1, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. It's off-putting a little bit to have this when you're talking about personalities and gifts that you have to present to council. To have it become a roll call vote seems so icy cold. I'm sorry, that's kind of the process we have, but the process seems to work, and we had to go through that. So again, you heard it from council, and I'll just echo it. You all have, you're great positive influences for Austin, and I hope that you continue that. And as everybody said, it's amazing that we got six folks interested. It's a lot to put yourself out there. So I appreciate your willingness to serve, and I do hope and know that you'll continue to promote Austin as you do. With that, we have got, Obala Obala will be finishing out their ward. Congratulations, Obala.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you, folks. Appreciate all your time and effort.
How blessed you folks for serving our community.
Appreciate it, Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.